14, we'll go right in calling the meeting to order. First item is citizen comment. I do not have any citizen comment cards on this particular part of the meeting, so we'll go to the discussion item, which is discussion of the proposed 2014-2015 budget. Counsel, there's been a request made to have a work session to specifically talk about budget. My reading on that request is sort of multifaceted, but the biggest thing I get from talking to members is that we have the whole comprehensive plan in the works right now. We have a lot of what we anticipate to be funding, not necessarily obligations, but requests that may come from the comprehensive plan. And are there anything that counsel may be aware of? We haven't seen the final document, okay? But is there anything in that what we conceive to be the outcome of that effort that we may consider for this budget? I think there's also been some discussion regards the pay and non-pay raise, and in particular, maybe some of the information you've received on the picking a certain hourly salary range and maybe considering something there or not considering. So those are a couple of things that I've heard from counsel. So we'll go ahead and just open it up for discussion. Who would like to begin the discussion? Okay, then, meeting over.
Mayor, I'm not.
No, no, hang on a second. Just one second. Did you have something to add to my?
I was just gonna show you one slide, just to kind of start the discussion, and then if you want to see that.
Well, aren't we gonna do that again in the regular?
Yeah.
So let's skip that. This is a work session, so let's just go right into the discussion. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. I'd like to ask, if I may, Roland McPhee to come forward. If you don't mind, Roland, could you elaborate a little bit on the streets part of the budget? Because I know to some people it appears we're just doing, we're taking a million dollars out of the general fund for George Ritchie, which is a great project and worthwhile for our community. But could you elaborate a little bit about this year's budget for 14-15, what we're exactly doing specific?
We have our standard pavement maintenance budget and our pavement repairs that take care of the asphalt patching of the streets, the pothole patching and preparing our streets for the chip seal and overlay programs. Those are our annual jobs. We also have Cutler Repaving has done for the past few years repaving in various streets. And the streets that we do that work on are based upon the pavement management testing that we do each year. Each year, we have a firm that comes in and tests for structural deficiencies or problems within our streets, a third of the streets every year. And the streets that don't meet our current level of service, which was established by pavement management policy by council, we repair those areas.
And of that third, how much are we talking as far as the budgeted amount for that, those ongoing repairs, in addition to maybe like some pothole repairs and things like that? What is that dollar figure that we have in the budget this year?
I believe it's around $3.2 million.
Okay. And that covers the one-third of the streets that we're going to perform maintenance on in this budget cycle, as well as the other incidental things that happen when people call in and have like a pothole or something of that magnitude that needs to be repaired?
Right. That pays for a third of our streets to be tested and then all the street repairs for the preparation work to be chip sealed or overlaid or general maintenance.
Okay. And how many, just, and not to catch off guard at all, but approximately how many streets, just kind of around about, are we looking at in this budget cycle that we're gonna have to do maintenance on?
We typically get that number of streets once we have performed the testing, but the size of the work, that right now, we're doing work probably on 100 streets throughout the city, or sections, different blocks, sections, and repave streets on more of our major arterials for where there's a high traffic volume.
Okay, very good. That number was 3.1 million, correct?
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gary.
I guess this question is for you, Mr. Willard. I'm looking at our budget for municipal court special, which we added additional $50,000 to the budget for 14-15. Can you tell me why we had to add? Because in the past, we were under $100,000.
Municipal court special?
Yeah, that's what this budget line item says here.
Okay. Sally?
Sally, right.
You're talking about the compliance specialist?
In this budget line item, I have, the title of it is municipal court special.
Oh, the special fund?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a fund of the court that we pay out of?
Okay. I guess what I was asking, Miss Sally, is that we went up by $50,000 from the 13-14 budget to the 14-15 budget?
And what we're spending? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay. That's because of the warrant officers there, now the city marshals that are being moved from the police department over to the court. So all of their salary, all of their benefits, their vehicles, everything that has to do with the city marshal's office is moving to the court, so all of our line items went up.
Yes, ma'am, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Of the police department.
Of the police department, okay.
Okay. All righty. Counsel, what other items would y'all like to discuss? I got these two looking. Mr. Manley, would you like to? Did you have something?
I think she's gonna say something. I'll speak.
Hey, if you want me to just keep talking, you know, I have questions.
No, hey, y'all.
One of the things I ask about, were the numbers on the hourly, if we looked at giving an increase to the hourly employees, and I believe, who pulled that number together, those numbers? Mary Ann, can you elaborate on that a little bit for clarification? I think we looked at, because I don't know that all the counsel received the information, just for the sake of the numbers, to know where we started, where we decided, where you guys thought it was a good cutoff point, the $35,000. Could you talk about that just a little bit, so everybody has an understanding? Thank you.
Okay. The last across-the-board employee increase that we had was in April 2013. Sorry. And we got a 3%. And then in October 2013, we did a market adjustment for those that were not paid at market. So that was 563 employees that received an increase, 308 were already at market, so they didn't. When we looked at the proposed budget, we didn't initially include a raise, and Kasha asked us to look at what we could do for our, you know, frontline employees, see what we could do for that.
Basically, hourly employees.
Right. So we chose 35.5 as the line. And the reason we chose 35.5 is because that is already the line we delineated for our tuition reimbursement against our tuition advancement. So below 35,500, that's where we pay upfront for people who want to go back to school. Since that was an already established line, we decided to go ahead and go with that. So the cost of the general fund for that would be one, go back. The cost of the general fund for the across-the-board raise, sorry, is 1.96 million. If we did the 35.5, though, then it would be 148,632. And 77 full-time exempt employees are, that's how many we have, 76 are above that 35.5 line, one is below. So one full-time exempt employee would get it, and then 281 full-time non-exempt employees, our hourly employees, would get it. But 548 total employees would not receive a pay raise in that instance.
Thank you. And when we talk about a pay raise, just to clarify, that 3% merit increase, that's almost a no-brainer, right? It's not like it has to be earned. Or I shouldn't say that, we work and we earn money. Clarify, it's not like it's based on merit or performance-based.
If we do an across-the-board raise, it would be across-the-board for whatever line is delineated.
Right. But just, and just to do, if we looked at those lower-paid employees that make below 35, 35.5, it would cost us $148,677 just for that set. And I guess my next question would be, would that be something that would be just there for, if that was something counsel decided to proceed with? Would that be merit-based, or would that just be an adjustment?
It could be whatever you tell us to do. It could be an across-the-board, and then it would not be merit-based. Or if you wanted us to do a merit-based for 35.5 and below, then we could certainly do that, and it would be based on what their evaluation is. So we would have to make sure everyone had a recent evaluation, or if it was upcoming, that they got that done before October 1.
Let me interject something about the merit raise versus this 3% raise. If you remember, counsel, we did the compensation plan study to compare our pay for, I think, every job, you know, versus other areas. And so we came up with that, and we had to make some adjustments. So that sort of took away the spirit of merit raise, because we were trying to get everybody up to at least, you know, some reasonable, you know, level of pay. In the past, when the 3% merit raise took place, it actually went off of their evaluation. So some people didn't get it because of their evaluation. So I think what you're talking about, or what's been discussed about the hourly, it's just sort of a carte blanche, if you will. If you only, if you make this amount of money, then you're gonna get X amount of raise because you make this amount of money and you're an hourly employee. So there's no merit to it or anything else.
I actually think there should be merit to it. But I don't want to go in and readjust the entire system, because the study's already been done. But the reason that I'm making this suggestion is because in studying the numbers, from the lowest-paid employee to the highest-paid employee, there's a huge gap. Now, as we move up the chain, the gaps get smaller, but there's still a huge disparity. And percentage-wise, it's bigger than it should be, appears, in some areas. And I know y'all are working to fix that, I know. But I have to ask that question, because it's like, okay, so what are we going to do? And I don't believe in just giving people money. I'll say that. We all work to earn our money every day. So maybe we could look at maybe doing it on a merit base. If you blah, 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 then, because a lot of times, we forget the people on our front lines, the people who are jumping off the trucks, the people that are mowing the grass, be it contract or our full-time employees, however they're classified. And so that's why I ask the questions about that.
Yeah, one thing also on hourly is it's a market-driven deal. And of course, I can remember a few years back, where take a backhoe operator, and because of what the oil field was paying, we couldn't even begin to hire somebody what we were paying. So adjustments were made to, you know, to compensate at that level. And I had this discussion with you. Listen, I don't know what our beginning hourly is or whatnot, but I can tell you, in my business, I can't talk about minimum wage. I'm not hiring anybody.
I try.
Okay? And it's just, it is what it is, but it's market-driven, you know, that you use to get to the level, so.
Right.
Did you have something to say? Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna save this for a council meeting, but since we're having a work session discussing the budget, I think now's the time for me to do this. So there's several things I want to say, so I'd ask for your patience, and let me just work through it, okay? First of all, I want to say, for the record, especially since the paper's here, I am in favor of an animal shelter. I'm gonna start with that, I'm gonna finish with that. My concern is, how do we pay for this animal shelter? Since I was elected, I've been advocating that our reserves are too low at 10%. And there's all kinds of debate about whether it is or it's not. The reality is that the state of Texas Budget Directors Association says that 60 days is a minimum recommendation. And some cities like Irving have 90 days of reserves. So our 10% level is already kind of low, and here we are with this animal shelter and the operational money that's been allocated. We're spending right down to a reserve level, which I think is too low to start with. So I think we need to increase our reserves. Secondly, from, and I've spoken to Mr. Willard about this, I don't think he did anything, you know, wrong. I just disagree with the fact that when you look at the $500,000 that he wants to allocate to next year's budget, it's associated with the operational cost of the animal shelter, that's an inappropriate use of our reserves. Now, of course, we can decide to do anything we want to with our reserves, but typically, our reserves have been allocated for capital outlay. Fire trucks, George Ritchie Road, Fourth Street, tearing down Beirut, all types of things like that typically have been coming from these type of reserves. I think the $500,000 doesn't belong there, and I've told him how I feel about that. Thirdly, and I think really most importantly of the things I want to say is, this is a substantial, this allocation of this 2.5 million and the 500,000, is a substantial increase in the size and the scope and the cost of our government. When I look at, you know, what cities like Chicago have done, and states like Illinois and California, there's no mistake why they're in trouble, why they're going broke, it's because their population decided a long time ago, they wanted the government to pay for everything. And I think here in Texas, and especially here in Longview, we have not drunk that Kool-Aid. We've been pretty fiscally solid here as a city and as a city council. And we've said, we want public safety, we want roads, we want clean water. And we also made a decision a while back, we want some pretty nice parks, you know, 33 parks, and the substantial increase in the size of our government came from Lear Park, but guess what? That went to the voters to decide. So I'm gonna recommend, as we move forward, and I have another thing to say about how we move forward, but when the time comes to move forward with the animal shelter, I think it needs to go to the citizens to decide whether or not we want to increase the size and the scope and the cost of our government this way. Again, I'm not against the animal shelter. This is all about how we pay for the animal shelter. And who decides? The seven of us, or 85,000 citizens in Longview? And lastly, what are we not doing by spending this money on the animal shelter this way? The two or three things that come to mind for me are, again, based upon having been on the council a few years, we typically buy our fire trucks with the vehicle replacement, fleet replacement program that all cities use to replace their vehicles, be it police vehicles, sanitation vehicles, or fire trucks in this case. Well, guess what? There's two fire trucks we're not buying this year. And the likelihood that we'll have enough cash next year, if we want to kick the can down the road one year, because what I'm hearing from Mr. Willard, based upon asset valuations, and we don't have 1,000 people moving into our city every day like Houston to increase our tax base, where's the money gonna come from to pay for those two trucks next year? And guess what? If you look at the fleet, fire truck, fleet replacement program, we're supposed to buy a $1.3 million ladder truck next year. Where's the money gonna come for that? And it's already been discussed, we sure aren't gonna have the money to pay for pay raises for our people. So if we get a year down the line, and now next year, we don't have the money to do it again next year, which again, I'm hearing is likely, how are we gonna retain, how are we gonna attract and retain the good quality people that we have now and they want to have in the future? So we're spending our reserves down to a level that's too low, I think. We're putting $500,000 of operational cost into the budget that doesn't belong there. We're substantially increasing the size and the scope and the cost of our government. And look at the things that we're not doing by spending the money this way. So as a result, here's what I'm gonna recommend that we consider, that we remove the funding for the animal shelter from this budget. That we buy the fire trucks, or other things that we might be kicking down the road, and I'll leave it to the city manager and others to discuss, or for the council to discuss. It's time for us to increase our reserve a couple of percent, 1.5% per year for the next two or three years, to get us to that 60-day level over the next four or five years. And then when the architect comes to us in December or January, with what the cost of the animal shelter will be, that is when I think we, as a council, should decide, how do we want to fund it? How do we want to pay it? And once we come up with that, then we take that to the voters for them to decide. And that's what I have to say. Thank you very much for your patience.
Okay, wow.
I've given that a lot of thought, as you can.
You did, wow. Okay.
Can I ask a question about that?
You can.
Did you mean, when you said remove funding for the shelter, did you mean both the construction, 2.5 and the point?
Correct, yes, I think both need to be removed. And again, Kristen, we'll have the report from the architect here in about three or four months. And the decision that we would need to make to fund it, I think, would probably be the same today as it would be three or four years from now, with regard to probably some kind of debt funding, rather than funding it out of cash reserves.
Okay, number one, we should have that report back from the architect within a month. Second, the contract that we have with the Humane Society for the property says that dirt starts to turn in January, correct? Scott? I think that's correct. Thirdly, I think this council has decided, if you recall, I asked for, we don't need you right now, Scott, it's okay.
I would like to clarify at one point, sir. We realized that there was no way to legally put that into the agreement, so it is not in there.
Oh, okay. But that was the?
There is no January deadline.
That's the original agreement in, that we made, and as far as, you know, the timeline that the animal shelter task force set, we're working within that timeline. So thanks. But I asked for, and brought to council for a vote to move forward, which is council unanimously said move forward, with no precondition, no preconception, that this was going to the voters, or that we weren't planning to fund it, okay? So that was never any question unanimously supported that we move forward. I think that, you know, with the fact that we have, you know, monies being put into the budget by the county to help support the building of this facility, bodes well as one of the reasons why I personally, as mayor, have brought everything regards a tax increase for projects such as roads, a 2007-2011 bond, that could possibly impact the tax rate to the taxpayer. I thought that meant, I thought well that that should be brought to the voters. This will not impact this, okay? That's not the intention, okay? So I disagree that that needs to go to the voters. We made the decision to move forward, we're moving forward from our perspective. As far as the fire trucks and whether we fund those or not fund those, I think Chief Steelman is a very good manager of the department and his funds. And I think if Chief Steelman had the concern with the city manager, that there was gonna be a problem down the road, A, or even more importantly, currently, that if we didn't order these new fire trucks, it could put us at some disadvantage from a service perspective. I feel pretty certain, knowing these two individuals, that that would have taken place, it would have happened. So, I mean, I understand, you know, Richard, where you're going, and that's fine, but I think the decision is made, you know, for us to move the project forward, and I think that's the intent of the council, to move forward. I don't think it's being done at cutting any other program short. You know, we've had a long time to work with this, and, you know, I think a lot of the budgetary numbers are actually quite conservative. You know, when you want to talk about adding 1.5% to your debt, as far as your reserve, the main reason the reserve's where it is was recommendations we did receive from some of the state agencies you speak of. But the other thing is, is this council consistently, you know, over the past, violated its own covenant, okay? So if you go back and look historically, how many times over the last 10 years or so that you had a 15% at the time? And a lot of time, and I disagreed, a lot of times, the monies that were used to come out of reserve were to make the budget balance, okay? Without cutting expenses or raising revenues, it was, and that's wrong, and I agree with that. But you can't set something as a reserve that you don't intend, okay? And council's gonna change, okay? And we know that. And when it changes, we don't know that they're gonna hold to that policy, because the council can change that, okay? So I appreciate your thoughts on that, and from my perspective, I think we've laid things out, we've put things in place, and I intend to see that we continue to move forward with that. Anybody else have any? Yes, ma'am?
On the animal shelter?
I need to respond to that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, let's get it on the record here, Mr. Mayor. What I'm hearing you say is you just?
You can call me, Jay. I'm a good one.
I'm gonna be as serious as you are about the things you just said, about what I want to say. So let's get this straight. What I'm hearing you say is, you're against pretty much everything I just said.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go on the record.
Sure.
Let me respond to each one of them. When does the report due, Mr. Willard, from the architect?
Keith, when's the, do you know when he's supposed to have it finished and?
We're gonna try to take bids in December, so.
No, he's wanting to know when the architect's reports do.
Well, his report, final plans, you know, I would say November-ish, and at that point, we will have a better idea of what the cost may be. But until we take bids, you know, you really don't have a hard number.
So I'm just trying to deal with each one of your points, and it's probably a minor one, but you said the report's due next month, it's not?
October-ish, October's what I've been told.
Okay, fine. It's not that big a deal. As Mr. Holloway just said, there's no deadline with regard to when we have to turn dirt, so that's a non-starter.
Okay, excuse me one second. That's, like he said, that's basically a new development. You found out legally, you could not hold us to that? But the original contracts we had, Mr. Bonds, that we received, the paperwork from the Humane Society said that we would, it was predicated, the receipt of that prop is predicated on that we would begin construction by January 2015 originally.
Mayor, any questions?
Yes.
Just for the sake of clarification, first off, we cannot put a January requirement or stipulation into the contract, so we did not. The only thing we?
Excuse me, one second. We didn't get a contract, we got a letter stating that the Humane Society was willing to donate the four-point, whatever acreage.
Right. And you have the deed now. It's all processed.
Now we got a deed, that, I guess, would be the contract. But the original we got, I'm just saying, stated that we had an obligation of January 2015.
My board would have liked to put in that, put that in there, but they found out they couldn't go putting stipulations in.
Give a copy of the original letter.
So there are no stipulations to it. We would like, if you do not use it for an animal shelter, that the property is returned to us.
But in the deed, there's no restrictions on the deed or timeframe on the document that granted to us.
Yeah, I'm just referring to our original letter of understanding.
Originally, they wanted that, but as we told them, we could not accept those stipulations on it, it just had to be a straight deed. And so that's the way it is.
During the animal task force meetings of one night, that's all we had to deal with, was their letter saying that?
Yeah, originally, that was what they wanted us to commit to.
Okay, all right, all right. I just wanted to clarify.
We couldn't do that.
So that's not in there.
Okay, good.
Thank you. So second point, there's no deadline. Thirdly, with regard to the kind of straw man you put up about how we made the vote that was unanimous, and yes, I was part of that unanimous vote to move forward, it was to move forward with the architect, to get the report back from the architect, what the cost would be. It wasn't, was not a de facto agreement to move forward, pay for it, because we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. So again, that's really a non-starter. And when you say there's no impact on the voters, I would hazard a guess that a lot of our fellow citizens would disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, Jay, that when you increase the size of the government by this amount, when you spend this amount of taxpayer money, they would want to have a comment about it. So I have talked to enough people who've told me that, enough people who've told me they really want this animal shelter. So there is an impact to the voters. And again, the task force recommendation was just that, it was a recommendation, we don't have to do what they tell us to do. With regard to Mr., with Chief Steelman, Chief Steelman is a good teammate, I guess the best way to put it. I think he's gonna do what the boss tells him to do. And if the boss says, we don't have money for a couple of fire trucks, he's gonna salute and move forward, because that's what he does, that's what he has to do. I made the comments I made, based upon the fact that we have, again, done this historically. And last, I'm really glad you brought up this thing about the reserve, because again, I think it's another straw man. If, in fact, the council didn't have the courage to stay within their reserves years ago, that has no impact on how Richard Manley feels about how we have to stick with reserves today. So I live within my means, I think most people that's sitting out here in the audience and our fellow citizens try to live within their means, and we need to set a level of what that is, and whether we agree it's 10%, or if it was 15% historically, the fact that y'all violated that when you were city councilman in the past has no bearing on what we're discussing today.
I think if you go back and look at my record on voting for budgets, you'll see I voted against it.
I have no doubt, but you brought that up a number of times, and it has nothing to do with what we're doing right now today.
Okay, well, okay, let me address the straw man, okay? I'm not sure exactly what that means, but anyhow, you know, the council's gonna have an opportunity to vote on this.
That was my point earlier, Jack.
But I'm saying, when it comes down to the money and funding, only thing that's being done right now is, the monies to support the construction are being put up now, because this budget will go into, like we know, next year. So the council will vote on it, as far as, do we spend the money, or do we send it to voters? I'm opposed to doing it, because I don't think it impacts, from a standpoint, that we're gonna have to, like what we said in '07, and what we said in '11, if we do these projects, there is the chance that we'll have to adjust the property tax rate up to pay for them. And thank God, in most cases, especially 2007, we didn't have to do it at all, if my memory my memory serves me correct. And on '11, knock on wood, it's close, but I mean, we're hopeful that we won't have to do as much there. So I'm not a straw man that I live in this, behind this rose-colored glasses that, but I think historically, I think, looking at what our community's done, looking at what our staff's done to be fiscally responsible with our budget, we've been able to do so. And, you know, the same people that you're talking to, I'm talking to, on my way here today, I had a phone call from an attorney that has a client who is now deceased that left a good bit of her estate to the construction of an animal shelter. And I shouldn't be saying that, but that's just how passionate people are. And if the council decides, it won't be a JD animal shelter, but if the council decides it doesn't want to move forward with that, it's a vote. You know, we vote, we go down the street, okay? So that's all to come. I was, if that's what the work session about is to discuss the animal shelter, fine. Does anybody else have anything?
I told you that was coinc--
Well, I understand.
No, I got one more thing to say.
Okay.
Okay, so in response to what you just said with regard to putting in the budget right now--
Now, are we going to play tic-tac-toe?
Well, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, and of course, this is going to be, ended up in the paper, the fact that we're voting on allocating this money for the animal shelter right now is just coincidental with a budget discussion. The reality is, because we've done this many times, we can amend the budget anytime we want to. So by taking it out of the budget, this speaks to what you asked earlier, I'm only asking to take it out of the budget until we have the cost from the architect in November, December, January. And at that time, if we decide as a council, that's when we can amend the budget, the same budget we're going to vote on right now, to put that money back in if we decide to do it.
Okay. I appreciate that. It's semantics and--
It's not semantics.
Well, it is, because we're going to vote on the budget, whether it's in the budget or out the budget, we'll vote on the budget.
Okay, so what do we do with the 4th Street money extension? Where'd that come from? We amended the budget to do it.
I'm talking about the animal shelter.
I'm talking about how that--
I'm talking about if we're going to vote on the budget with what's been recommended with the money in the budget. If anybody disagrees that it should be there--
Mm-hmm.
We vote against the budget.
That's exactly right.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, this meeting is about everything we need to get done. Roland, could you come back again, please? Thank you. Streets are such an integral part of our community. And I wanted to go back to something else. We're about to be completed with our last bond election, 2011. Where are we going to stand in the next budget cycle in regard to our bonds? Do we know?
The last bit of bond issuance should happen in '15.
Okay.
And then it is proposed that at that time, that would be the beginning of the construction. The last project, which we're acquiring right away on right now, is Cotton Street.
Right, okay.
So that's when we would start on that last project.
So perhaps would we be, because streets are a very important part of, you know, this community. So perhaps are we looking at a good time to start evaluating the possibility of another streets bond package? Since we're, you know, rolling out of one, moving into another, because I'll be forthright to say, in my district, our concern is streets in South Longview. And it's because it's the oldest part of town, and we continue to talk about it. So in tandem with that, and then plus sidewalks, would that perhaps, in your professional recommendation as the director of that division, do you think it's time for us to begin looking at that, too? Because we're also talking multi-millions of dollars. And so I'm concerned to making sure that the public is aware that it may be time for us to begin doing some of those projects that they think that we've forgotten about, even some that are outside of that list that was, that started in the '80s. What are you thinking?
And there are always needs within streets to discuss, and if council deems that that's the correct time to take that action and discuss those again, we're more than willing to do that. Your pleasure.
Thank you. And I would like to go on record as stating that I do think it's time for us to begin another, evaluating another streets bond package, because we have so many areas that are still poorly, the streets are poor. We've done good, we've done well, and we barely, we did well to pass the last one. But I'd like to state for the public, it's time for us to fix our streets, and I hope that our community can come together and realize that this is something for the betterment of our own, our entire community, although needs may outweigh one side of the community versus the other. Because something else that we're beginning to see are sidewalks. Councilman Smith and I served on the streets bond task force. And, you know, we kind of went outside and we got the task force to agree, and council agreed, to go ahead and install sidewalks. But now we're finding through CPAC that that's something the entire community is now wanting, because it's aesthetically pleasing and it's also better for our public safety. So I would ask that staff explore some additional ways. I know we've talked about funding and talked about it, but get serious about it. Give us some hard numbers, how much it's going to cost, so that we can inform the citizens how much it's going to cost. Because a lot of times we, and it's no, nothing about y'all, I mean, y'all are doing a great job, but a lot of times we don't inform the public. We get isolated on one issue, but a lot of people are concerned about the streets. And the fact that that's going to be a multimillion-dollar project, I'd like to see us start looking at that now as well.
Let me ask council, with the 2007 bond, of course, we had some park things in there and other capital items in addition to streets. 2011 was pretty much--
Streets.
Streets. And, you know, streets is kind of like the roof on your house. You can put it off, put it off, put it off. Sooner or later, you can change the roof on your house, or it's not going to hold its value. But if, what Councilman Williams is asking is that, is it time to start looking at the next run? You know, both of those elections, by the way, passed about 70, 30. So people, like you said, but I would recommend to council that Mr. McPhee and Mr. Bonds and the rest of our engineers can tell you where, and I think what we did, we tried to find what are the ones we keep going back to and patching, patching, patching.
Right.
And it's time to reconstruct, and that's the better investment. But if council wants to start looking at the next, okay? And a lot of things go into that, because you've got to make sure that your debt's coming down.
Right.
Because if you're going to add new debt, how that impacts your INS rate of your tax, okay? Like Mr. Manley's talking about, being fiscally conservative, we want to do that. So we've got to try to time it such that we're, you know, we're not having to raise the tax so much that it really, you know, people might vote for doing it, but over a period of time, they seem to forget. And because you're, they got a higher tax bill, and so this thought needs to go into that. So I'm saying if we want to ask, if we want to recommend that they go ahead and start looking at--
Please.
You know, where those projects are, that we can have a discussion, Roland, once we get through the budget cycle and we can focus on that. And maybe that's a good work session, too.
And Mr. Willard can probably tell us, we've talked about a little bit, where we are in regard to our bonds and our debt. When do you forecast the best time it's going to be for our budgeting purposes?
We're going to be doing some refunding here, work here in just a little bit, but we've got another, and Mr. Martin could probably speak to this a lot better than I, but we've got some more debt out of this 2011 voter-approved that we're going to be issuing. We're not finished issuing all that debt.
That's right.
So what is it, another $5 million? Or what's the last installment we're going to be issuing? This fall? How much left do we have to issue in the 52 million?
He's got it.
I know I'm catching you cold, but--
Mr. Willard, Mayor, Council, John Martin with Southwest Securities. I believe that number, don't hold me to it, is in the $8 million ballpark.
So we still have another $8 million or so we're going to issue, which will add on to the debt service for the next year and on. So I would think, and Mr. Martin--
So we've been building around that in terms of the way we've staggered this, and the plan was, when we went to the voters, you'll recall that, you know, in terms of keeping that tax rate at a level that we got to, we need to keep the, our integrity and promise to the voters, and we've been well within that. And that's important as we start to plan for another election. So we can obviously, once you start kind of getting these numbers together, we can start, we'll get with Angela and her crew and, you know, be able to run some schedules and kind of figure out what that might look like on an amortization deal. Streets are an interesting deal, because streets don't have the length and useful life that a lot of, that our buildings do--
Right.
And things like that, so you--
We had some projections on when some of these bonds start falling off.
Right.
When is that? In about four or five years before it starts?
Well, you get some fairly significant help here, starting after '17, and then again after '19. So we really start, you know, we have a reduction of a couple of million dollars in the next seven years, so that we'll be able to, you know, layer in.
That's just your debt payment.
Yep.
Okay.
Just the tax-supported debt.
So one of the things, as part of this, you look at is, A, I think, you know, where our current tax rate is, you know, from what I hear in talking to people in the community is, it seems to be about in that, we don't love it, but we ain't exactly hating on it. But if you start going way up, we're going to go to hating quick. But it's to see what you're going to be dropping off, okay, will allow you in debt service to raise how many dollars worth, okay, and to maintain somewhere in the same neighborhood that you're at right now.
I was just going to agree with that. From a planning standpoint, I think when you look at what you've done in the past, where you convened the CIP committees that you named in the past, and by the time we do that, come up with what we're going to recommend to the voters, the voters vote on it. You know, we're going to be up where he said, we were dropping off one of those bonds in 2017. It'd probably take that long.
We've got a major mayoral election coming next May. Boy, what a good time to put that on there. Usually going to have a good turnout. Yes, ma'am.
Add something. If we're going to go ahead and put together some numbers, I would echo what Keshia said. I would love to be serious about sidewalks, and I would also like to consider numbers for completing our trail system that currently isn't funded. That's a very popular idea in our community.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Garrett.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go back to the animal shelter issue.
Come on, now.
Now, if you want to buy the naming rights to shelter for a million dollars, we can do that, too.
I name it after you. Could we like you so much, we give it to you for $7.50.
You could buy the naming rights.
No, don't go there, man. We're not even there yet.
Let me say, I'm glad that we separated the cable franchise fund and immediate development budget for this cycle, because both of those were combined at one time. But now that the government specified we have to have a PG, a pay for some, for public access channel, we separate those two out of the budget. Because I got kind of confused about the media development budget of $194,000, finding out what that was for. But I got a clarification from Mr. Miller, and he clarified my question on that.
Okay. You know, one of the interesting things about that, and boy, I'm definitely not a, don't get it all about the technology industry, but it appears to me that it opens an opportunity for other providers to come in and compete for, you know, our residents' services, which I think is much needed in our community.
Yes, sir.
Okay? All right, what else? Mr. Sims, what do you think about it?
I'm taking it all in.
Oh, okay. All right, is there any other item or discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody else have a question other than me?
I have some comments on some earlier stuff that we talked about.
I have a question. Let me ask a question if you don't--
Go ahead.
Mary Ann, do we have any departments in the city, other than police and fire, I believe, that are actively securing grant funding? And housing, don't count them, that's federal HUD dollars. Do we have any other departments?